All three selectmen are present. Our town administrator is present and we're recording. Secretary is present. It's a time is seven oh three now. We're gonna open this meeting up. Okay, on the agenda first, we want to talk about the
I guess I didn't scratch off.
That's okay.
Did you see that?
Yep, I see that. We're gonna talk about the minute meetings. We have two meetings to approve. Two sets of minutes to approve.
Yeah.
First one is for the workshop. We'll do the by order. We'll do the thirteenth first.
Mike, for the thirteenth meeting minutes, I would like to recuse myself of my selectman position to go into the public.
So noted, that's okay?
First one you're accepting?
Is for the minute minutes of meeting Thursday, July thirteenth.
What time is that?
That was at seven oh three.
Okay, thank you.
July thirteenth.
And you're making the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
And I'll second the proposal.
Any discussion on the minutes?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay, I'm gonna, I have no further discussion, but I think as a member of the public, the third selectman presented, made a presentation that evening as a member of the public. And I'm gonna, he wanted to ask something being certain to the minutes and I think is I'm gonna give him the floor during this discussion period.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Dave Knoll for the record.
As a member of the public.
As a member of the public. I read through the July thirteenth meeting minutes, which we discussed Kelsey Road issues. And I found several of the wordings were changed and it wasn't the intention of what I said that night in the wording. And then there were several paragraphs with whole sections missing, including some comments by Bob and again by you, Mike. And I have gone through the meeting minutes and got corrected response and I would like to supply them as supplemental meeting minutes to be attached to those meeting minutes and or corrections. And the reason I did that is because there's substantial amount of things in here.
Are they things that you want to put on the record?
Very, very clear things I want to put on the record, like distance at the end of Kelsey Road and information about the town meeting and whatnot. So I'd like to supply that to the public.
We should include that as an addition to the minutes.
This was, I think inadvertently it was included, corrected, and you just withdrew it to
That's right, withdrew it to do it as a member of the public instead of as one of the selectmen.
And have it amended to that section.
Yep, that's exactly right. I have no problem with that.
And I don't either.
So you're gonna list it as an attachment to go on the minutes?
Yes.
So you're making the motion to amend that to the minutes?
I am.
And I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, all in favor of making the amendment, the attachment?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Now you can vote on the motion.
Yes, and we're gonna make a vote on the motion to accept the minutes? All in favor of the minutes as a minute?
Aye.
Let's go, accepted. Dave, just let this sit back on the board now, so I'd like to make a note of that.
I don't know, you look pretty good there.
How do you want this to go? Make the motion to accept the
The amendment for attach, for the attachment to the minutes.
All right, to accept Dave Knoll's statement to be attached, something like that, okay.
And put parentheses as a private citizen.
Okay.
Not in a private meeting, a special meeting minutes, right?
Workshop, yeah.
Workshop.
I guess I didn't amend the agenda entirely.
What was the correct date on the workshop?
The twentieth.
June twentieth?
Yeah.
Let's see, is it coincidence?
You can only check.
Like it was June twentieth, the date on the special workshop minutes.
I, I think I have them.
Yeah.
I do have them. You just correct them.
Okay. I think the agenda was
Right. Mr. The agenda. Okay. We had a workshop on Thursday, July twentieth. The workshop was to work on the personnel plan and any business that came before the board. We made some significant improvements to the personnel plan, which we'll go through tonight. And there was also a little bit of business at the end. We talked about the election, setting up the election and signing a few grants for the OHRV grant. And that was essential of the minutes of the meeting. The question is, we can make a motion now to accept the minutes, but before we do it, we can do the minutes and then we can
Yeah, do the workshop and talk that.
Afterwards, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the date of the workshop?
The date was Thursday, July twentieth.
Okay.
At PM, at three PM.
Three PM, okay. And then Bob, you seconded that?
No, we, no one has made a motion to accept that yet.
I'll make a motion that we accept the July twentieth meeting minutes as written by
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those minutes? I just, I just thought the agenda that we had, basically the agenda helped, made it go smoothly. We worked through the first session, yeah. So future, if we have workshops, we have a nice strict agenda to follow. All in favor of, any other further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you sign and send that into lean source minutes?
Do you need those for your notes or are you good?
Excuse me.
Do you need to look at those to write it down or are you good?
No, I leaned through the minutes, so that's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting up to a public comment now. And if you have anything to say, please state your name so we can get it recorded and I'll start it. We're done, I think, for the
I'm on the agenda, so I'll pass.
Town clerk?
Linda Landry, town clerk, just wanted to thank everybody who participated in the elections. You made it go very smoothly. That special state election that we had this past Tuesday, the selectmen did a great job of going over and setting up on the day before and it certainly freed me up to do my other election duties. So, nice job, everybody. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to welcome, thank you. I like, as I say, it was a teamwork by all parts.
It was great teamwork.
And even Fred, Fred, a former moderator, came in and gave a hand too, which was all, which was very nice.
Which is always good.
Make a mention to the new people that did the counting at the end of bill.
We did have some new counters.
We did have some new counters. Rainey jumped right on that and recruited some brand new people to help count. Unfortunately, one of them's moving to New Jersey in a couple months, so we won't have her around in March.
But it's nice to get new people involved in that.
It is.
It was a nice election where it wasn't overwhelming.
Right, it was a great intro.
Exactly.
So it was very good.
Okay, going down, sir, anything? Les, anything?
I'm here with Donna.
Okay, very good, sir. Wait, chief? Yeah, I just wanted to point out, the last couple of meetings that I've attended here, I've seen Dave Knoll has recused himself as a selectman. And in the past, I've seen that done here with the selectmen continue to sit at the table and then act as a member of the public. What Dave's done the last couple of times is he's come, he's removed himself from his seat, taken a seat in the public area. And I just wanted to recognize that as being an important thing for him to do. And it's something that I hope will be, continue to be done in the future. Just wanted to point out that that was, that's the right way to do it and I want to
I agree with that, I think that's the way it should be done. Yeah, I think there is something, I saw something somewhere where they have to actually remove themselves from, from the
That's the recommended way to do it properly. And Dave's done that and I just wanted to point that out and say thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Good. All right, chief. All set? All set? Okay. We'll go first to the agenda. We have historical awareness. Donna Dunn.
Okay.
Did you get our email back?
I did, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, Dave, you're acknowledging that I had brought the question before the board. There should be one of these for each of you. We, we have a member who will be stepping down in September due to logistics. She simply won't be here. So we took the opportunity to look at our entire makeup of our entire committee at the time. As long as we're gonna be looking for one person, might we look for another? And we have a committee member who has been completely MIA for, oh gosh, October 2015. Not only does this person not come to the meetings, which is not, you know, a lot of people can't make meetings and they have excused absences. They call, they're ill, they're out of town. One of our members, for instance, is out of town about half of the time. But this particular person doesn't even
Donna, I'm gonna, I could get a letter from that member you're talking about.
Yes.
And the thing is, that person's asked that this be discussed and non-public.
Oh, I would appreciate that.
And so I'd like to, I'd like to give her the due respect of that consideration and bring it back to the board before we continue down this path and consider not doing it in non-public.
That would be great. Do I get to participate in that?
Yes, you do, because you're the, you're a participating member, yes.
When would this be?
Today.
You let me know, today?
Yes.
Tonight?
Have you verified that that qualifies for non-public?
Yes, I do.
You did, okay.
Okay.
And the other thing we do, I'm not sure, Donna, if you're okay with it only because you're gonna be here tape recording the session, we could bring that up in non-public at the end of our meeting and save everybody from having to leave.
That would be fine. I wish, if no one had told us what was gonna happen, it would've been nice to have known.
I didn't get the
The letters came this afternoon.
Okay, that's why.
I read it half hour ago.
And just one other quick thing. Every once in a while, we stumble, in our research to present material, we did stumble across some new pictures I don't think anyone has seen before. And I'm just gonna quickly show you two of them. And we didn't make copies for everybody. You see these two pictures right here? When Public Service came to town and put the power lines in, they rented what was then the Unti's house. I guess Grace and Marv lived in it most recently. It's occupied now. But they rented the house from the homeowner. The homeowner's moved out for a year or two. And then they built camps to accommodate up to 200 people.
Yeah.
And those people lived there on site. And that was the base of operations for Public Service. And they didn't have another camp all the way up till Tilted. And then they had one some down below Manchester. But that's the first we've ever seen. And this was a large operation that went in, went on in town that I just thought they were very interesting pictures.
Are you talking about?
I know.
Is the farm on Blackfoot Road?
Yes, the one where all the
Oh, the road's in the village?
Yes, yes.
Interesting.
Show you very quickly.
Oh my goodness, that's a valid one.
Yeah, wow.
We'll just vote on it as we go to the end of the meeting.
Do we need to vote to move that?
No, we'll move it. We have to vote to enter that end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So historical awareness, we'll just move that to the, later in the meeting when we go into non-public. I'm gonna go right to John Wigan. Fire chief, you have an update on the breathing apparatus grant?
Yep. Good word from the heads that we have received the grant. So we voted on a town meeting. We'll accept it if we get it. You guys wanna accept it also, but
Yeah, is there a dollar amount for it, John?
Yeah, it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Sweet.
The town's percent, which is five percent, which is six thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. So the town will receive one hundred and thirty-two, three eighty-one. That'll be the positive at some point in the general fund. And then when we make the purchase, we just pay for it. And the six, six, six thousand six hundred and nineteen's coming out of, I mean, out of five departments that are equipment fund.
All I have to say is good job. I'm glad we got it.
Yeah, great job.
Tammy did a lot, did most of the work on it, writing it. This will be the third one we've got in probably the last ten, fifteen years.
Does this, are these individual units that the firefighters were using?
Yep, twenty packs and twenty bottles. So we get forged bottles and twenty new state, they have breathing apparatus.
Excellent.
So it'll be a process with, you know, obviously price it.
Yep.
They don't
Is there an expiration date where we have to use, use no later?
Yeah.
Okay, just keep that, you know?
Yeah, we obviously want to build before then, but yeah, we gotta look what else is out there for the equipment and try it out and then whatnot. So it'll be a little time.
Well, congratulations. That's, again, we, that's a great achievement to get that.
It's a lot of money, so
Thank you for applying for those of the town to, you know, save us some money on that.
Yeah, we've been applying for this one for about two or three years, so, you know, it's just a competitive bid and, you know, it's just random who they handed out to, so.
We're lucky to get it for a small town.
We are, yeah. Because some of these towns have professional grant holders. That's all they do. You know, the towns that can afford it, in my opinion, that is Mary Mac's, those big towns, they get grants all the time.
Yeah.
But they have somebody on board that
Yeah.
They have their job.
A staff full time.
So it's, you know, it's good to, but they look at it, it's a competitive process and, you know, they look at the need, our budget, town's financial situation, and that's all that was in consideration, so.
I have it here, I'll read it and then make motion if you want.
Yep.
Hey, John, can you make sure that I get the grant paperwork signed by the board before the end of the year? Because it expires according to our warrant. I mean, once we're signed, then it's, it's a contract, so we don't have to, it takes as long as we need to get the remainder done.
Thank you, myself. Okay, make the motion.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen accept the grant for the update of the breathing apparatus and the total grant, the one hundred and thirty-nine K, of which the town will come up with sixty-six nineteen. And the balance of the grant will be one thirty-two, three eighty-one.
I gladly second that.
Thank you very much, chief.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sue?
Do you second it, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll listen to the court. I'm sorry, are you favoring the motion?
And Mike accept it. And all in favor? Do the motion update breathing apparatus grant.
Okay. I'll listen to it. Be cool when you get the second.
Okay, well, we also have some additional monies, which it's a large amount, so it was advertised that we're accepting some assets back to the town. This is a disbursement of COOP assets, which came from the recycling center, which did not quite get off the ground, as I understand.
That's part of it.
Yeah.
It's actually part of the COOP that we belong to, we still belong to for trash.
Okay.
Because we still are in on the landfill. They're giving up assets.
Okay. Well, and I understand it's been advertised in all appropriate places, including the Concord monitor?
Okay.
Okay. We can, we can go ahead and accept that if you want to make the motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars from the disbursement of assets of the COOP.
So, any further discussion on that? Thing is, I'd like to just, this is not money we're gonna go out and spend freely and I think we should just put this into general fund and not see where the rest of the funds come in for the rest of the year and make no rash decisions on this money.
Yeah, obviously there's
Sure, go with your own, sorry.
That's where it'd be positive. You, this is, this would be the one opportunity that's a big decision to expend money over above their allotted budget.
Okay. But the thing is, we do have, remember, the biggest problem we had was the reserves. And so until we know the, until we get to the end of the year, I'd say we do nothing with it except hold it. Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I take somebody from the public.
No, you, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess, before you figure out, you know, I understand saving it for surplus.
Thank you.
If you decide that you're gonna spend it, I would like to see you put it towards repairing that Mack, that roll-off truck.
Okay. Well, we've got a bunch of expenditures in, so the thing is, when the time comes, it'll be definitely
Yeah, I just, I hate to see, I mean, that's money that, you know, technically as its town money, but it was through the transfer station, that money was done. So, I mean, that truck needs some serious work and it's got more life into it. I think we should put a little into it. You know, the last quarter I got on the paint, you were looking at to do that truck correctly, was it like eighteen thousand dollars? You know? Just something to think about.
The green Mack, is what you're talking about? How old is that truck now?
It's, we bought it in 2002. It's a 2003 model. It has, it's just turned, I think, ninety-two thousand miles. So there's plenty of life left in it. You know, we should be able to get, if we take care of it, we should be able to get another five, 10 years out of that thing, you know?
Five or 10?
Yeah.
Well, we gotta get 20 out of that.
We're already getting to the 20 mile.
Thank you, Wade. But so noted. And the thing is, I think you did bring up that it is having some issues with that truck.
Yeah, just, just
We signed, we signed, we see that we're checks are coming for, I'll leave it at that, we know that. All right, any more money came in for home day?
Yes.
Okay. Home day's just coming in with more money. We have another eighty dollars for old home day table fees, a donation. It was a donation. So we have to accept it. And so for our, say, thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash B, Roman numer three B, we have to accept those funds. So I'll take a motion to accept the eighty dollars?
So, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Now, in favor of accepting the funds in the amount of eighty dollars for our home day table fees?
Aye.
Aye.
You second that, Dave?
Yeah, Bob, Bob was the first.
That's quite fast, isn't it?
Okay, we'll slow it down a little bit.
Just when it comes to the motions, I'm all set.
Okay.
I'll listen to the court.
Just
Yeah, Mike, we were supposed to wait till seven thirty
Four.
On that public hearing.
Okay.
Seven twenty-four, it's close, but just for the record, we were supposed to wait till seven thirty and it was probably
Okay, I will, if anyone from the public has a concern and they walk in at seven thirty, I will open it up to concerns.
That was in reference to the COOP money, the anticipated funds. So if somebody comes in or somebody would like to speak at seven thirty, we'll open it back up. We're a little faster than our agenda tonight.
Well, the slow part's coming up. Let's, we're going right on to the agenda. We're gonna look at the personnel plan, the, some of the reasons, some of the changes we made at the recommendations at the meeting. Okay. Lean, I think, put them in order as they followed in the personnel plan. I have a copy of personnel plan if we need to make reference to it. We can either do it line by line or
I think just by section, Mike, if you can, because this section's kind of lengthy.
Yeah.
And let us, let the public know that we put that section in there and then the other things, we can go line by line.
Just for the record, in the minutes, the board kind of went from one section to another section. So the, where I put the changes in a document for the board to sign and accept, it's in order of the personnel plan. So it may have, it may not reflect exactly what's in the minutes, but they've just been moved in the order of the page or the subject of the
The section, yeah.
All right, I'll start with the first section. We added a section, and we, first of all, we added table contents, abusive work environment. And we used, that was a, we used language from the state and it basically talks about abusive conduct, bullying, and defines it, talks about how it's to be dealt with if we, if it's experienced. And
So it's, it's, it's in addition to one of the sections that we had in the personnel plan.
Right. And I don't think, I don't think we need to read the whole thing, but the thing is, it's all, it's just something new. We're following state.
And then we changed this up and headed to
Right. Okay, well, I'll come right back to that. Any further discussion on abusive work environment as we discussed at the meeting?
No. Just want to let everybody know that all of the departments will be getting a new copy once this is signed and in place, so you guys will have the copies.
It'll be, not only the department, each employee, each employee will get it.
So we'll have an amended dated copy that they can have.
Okay, so I can take a motion to accept that abusive work environment section and the change of the table of contents.
I'll make a motion that we add the new section for abusive work environment and the policies and procedures along with it. If it is, if it is, if it is something that happens.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that section?
Only that we're addressing an LSR that got passed into law just a few years ago. It had to do with anti-bullying. And so that's what created that law. And we had nothing to address it in our personnel plan. So we made sure that that was inclusive with the things such as sexual harassment and those other things.
Okay.[1482.32] All, all, go ahead.
I just want to say, who seconded that?
I did.
I made the motion.
Yes, I got you, your motion. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All in favor of accepting the abusive work environment section?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna save this one to the variant.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, the next section was the, uh, longevity pay section.
Are you going by the minutes, or are you going by the...
We're going by your agenda.
By your agenda.
Okay.
Not by the minutes, because your agenda, and the changes.
Page four?
We're page two or five.
Yeah, two or five.
Right, but, uh, section, section page four of the personnel plan, is that what you're doing?
No, we're on page seven now. We're going all the way to the bottom.
Okay, yep, okay.
Okay.
See it down there, because all the other parts are part of that abusive work.
Correct, okay, yep, yep.
Okay, um, and I think it's...
We'll meet it over that one line.
You can.
Um, on the longevity section, we changed the, uh, eight-year amount instead of three ninety to four hundred dollars, so it's a little bit easier do the calculations for our employees. The ten-year amount went from seven eighty to eight hundred. The twelve-year longevity went from eleven seventy to twelve hundred. And then the fourteen-year section went from fifteen sixty to sixteen hundred. Even numbers again, a little easier to calculate these when we're doing the town report at the end of the year. And then sixteen years plus went from nineteen fifty to two thousand. And we got rid of the eighteen-year plus and the twenty-year plus, so sixteen-year plus, it's gonna stay a flat rate of two thousand. The other two amounts were twenty-three forty and twenty-seven thirty respectively for eighteen and twenty years. So we increased slightly all the lower ones and then made it flat after that amount of years. So...
I, I, I think it's, uh...
At the, at the end of that, we also had, um, a lengthy conversation in reference to how the two thousand and seven meeting went and referenced the town clerk's eligibility for that section of the benefits. And, uh, we stated that as far as January first of twenty eighteen, uh, the town clerk will be able to get the longevity pay on there as well, and that's part of the bottom paragraph on there.
Any further discussion? Nope. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on, next section.
Holiday pay. I'll, I'll address this. Essentially, uh, we had a problem in the past where, um, if a part-time employee was required to work on a holiday, they would not get any additional monies for working on a holiday, they were required to work on. So we essentially said that, um, uh, employees, holidays, full and part-time employees working on a holiday shall be paid overtime at a rate of one and one-half times the normal rate of pay. And, um, we also said, um, if work on holidays require prior approval by the department head, town administrator, or a board of selectmen. We just don't want to give out overtime for the sake of having to come in and work, because you want to work on an overtime day. It's gotta be an exception to the rule. And then we said, um, there were some employees who were required to work on a holiday, may take a full and holiday, full and holiday must be scheduled at least one week in advance and approved by the department head. We had a town administrator in there also as a, uh, as an approving authority. And that's about all the changes we made there.
Yeah. We left, we left all the pertinent holidays in there, all the holidays you've previously had. Haven't made changes other than the, actually, the part-timers that, you know, usually end up, if they have to work, getting straight time.
And that's really, the biggest department effect on is police department chief, and I think that may help you as a management tool.
Thank you. So department heads, and if they're not available, or if the department head has to work, we go to town administrator and/or the selectmen for approval on those dates, um, if they're gonna coincide. And, uh, we made sure to put a note down the end, if applicable, on the holiday pay, because, uh, as you know, full-time employees get holiday pay anyway. So those employees will be getting their normal, um, hour and a half or time and a half plus their holiday pay on that, which part-timers don't have the holiday pay, so it's just the time and a half. So we wanted to be clear on it, so we put if applicable down there, and that kind of took care of the whole paragraph.
But essentially, it helps out our part-time workers.
Yeah.
When they're required to work.
And it keeps our full-time workers getting the compensation they were always getting.
Okay, do I, on to Dana Motion. Do we have a motion on this one here?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes on, uh, holiday pay.
You know, I think that...
Okay, any further discussions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next section, vacation. Who wants to take the tack to this one, maybe pick that one?
Oh, you can take this one. All right, on vacation time, we had a, an issue come up where when you got to the second, fifth, and ten-year anniversaries, it was unclear on whether you could take vacation during that second, fifth, or tenth year, or wait till the following January to take that. And we determined that the town had been taking them during those years, so we made it clear and put a line in their paragraph. Said during the second, fifth, and tenth year anniversaries, eligible, eligible vacation time will be credited after the anniversary date of hire. So after their date of hire during those years, they could take that vacation additional time. And we also clarified it in the chart. You know, after the second year, there were two weeks after date of their, uh...
Anniversary hire.
Anniversary hire. The fifth year, three weeks after hire anniversary date, and the tenth year, four weeks after hire anniversary date. So we just clarified that section so that people knew when they could take it, because it was unclear. And, uh, it turned out that after reviewing it, most of the townspeople were taking it during those years on prior years. We wanted to make sure it was clear for all the department heads that had people coming up for those vacation times. So I guess we'll get a motion for that.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, uh, vacation changes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next section, we're down to personal days.
Bob made that change. Did that one bother you after?
No, actually, I thought Mike made the change.
Okay.
No, I thought you did make the change.
Well, the thing is, we wanted to, we clarified and simplified the use of personal days. Employee must, who uses less than two full sick days, they usually was reading one, uh, in a twelve-month period, shall be awarded two personal days. Made it a little more a reasonable strange, a reasonable standard to get a, uh, personal day, especially for employees who show up all the time, and they struggle, uh, basically to stay as healthy as they can and chill for work. And, uh, we struck out the second sentence, which was confusion, confusing to all. And we just said, personal days shall be accrued in hours each year, and must be, it must be used in the following year. They can't be accrued, they gotta be executed. In the following year. Any discussion on the personal days?
Nope, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the changes to the personal days as written.
I'll second that.
Oh, any, any last, any further discussion? If not?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And we all voted on it, yes. Okay. And then the last section, um, retirement plan. I'll talk this one. We just added, uh, we just tried to clarify this, what, what hours can be brought forward and used when you, uh, work, when you retire. And right now, as it stands, when you have, uh, unused sick leave, uh, at the end of the, during the year, which we know sick leave has to be used every year, but let's say you, uh, retire in December, and you've spent the whole year healthy, and you have sick leave accrued, well, you can take one, right now, as, as written, you can take one-third of your his or her accumulated sick pay. The only section we added was, um, when people donate sick hours, we made it an exemption, exemption for sick hours shall not be used in the calculation of this retirement benefit. And that was the extent of the, uh...
Make sure that they know that we did not take the accumulated sick payout of one-third.
No, we kept everything the same. We just clarified the fact that sick bank hours, those are the donated hours, which are carried, uh, uh, from year to year forward. And sick bank is basically to help yourself and fellow employees through catastrophic and difficult times. And, but it's not really a retirement plan.
Right, but sick pay is, is part of a...
Benefits, they're...
Benefit, that will be included in the retirement.
Correct. Any, I need a motion on this one.
I'll make the motion. To, to, to accept, accept it, yeah.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on this sick bank?
Nope.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now, I have two original copies, single-sided. You can sign those on the board to my records.
We have to make that final load about two minutes.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And then at the, at the beginning of the manual, and we put this, uh, uh, I understand that this manual supersedes, replaces all the other previous manuals as amended and adopted. We put as amended and adopted, and they make it very clear. There are old manuals hanging around there, and those old manuals, uh, don't have no, no bearing on it. They have to have a new one. And that's why we'll give, every new employee will get a copy of the new changes.
And the, and the good son of police?
Yes, in new ways. Okay, all in favor of making that last change, uh, to the, uh...
For, for a motion?
Well, it's a change, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept.
No, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we did. Now, where's, I have copy here.
You have two in your packet, obviously. Remember the whole patch with the binder?
Yes.
And they're all flagged?
Yes, they are.
So I can make copies of that.
Okay.
Mike, do we want to check any public comment as far as this goes, or...
I, I don't think so, but the things with, if, uh... But I will. The thing is, I will open up for any public comment on this one, just to be in all transparency on this one. Meeting was open to the public, and minutes are already, we already had a request for minutes to be released.
Like, Woody was at one of our meetings and had some input on it. I didn't get one of them to sign the one yet.
There you go, sir.
Okay, we're giving the same one.
Did I, did you?
I think so.
No, you got it right.
I see, come on.
I glad that's what you did. I thought that...
You should see me play cards, huh? This is the same copy as you have.
As one of them.
I just want to say, I want to thank the select, the, my fellow selectmen for coming out on a off day to do this, and listening to me rant a little bit.
Yeah, so just so the public knows, we had two meetings to go over the policies and procedures for the town employees, and, uh, these were cumulative changes that we made after the two meetings.
Now, we do have one outstanding one, just as a reminder, and I'll say it as a reminder to the public. Everyone's always concerned about medical costs, and the medical costs for the town keeps going up, and, uh, we will, we will be reviewing the medical cost as it applies to our personnel manual, but we're waiting, we're waiting on, um, insurer information. And that's scheduled hopefully for the latter part of, uh, August or September.
The first meeting in August should be here.
We made a decision, we made a decision not to hold up the rest of these changes, because we have employees that are gonna be affected to those changes very soon, so we want to get those underway, even though we might have to print up a couple copies of this if we do change anything on the, on the other portion of it.
All right. Something I, I inherited when I first came on the board. We're gonna review the, uh, the school construction comments we had.
Oh, yeah.
All right. As you all recall, we sent a, uh, a letter by, from our lawyer saying, what, why are they not completing their work? They finally get back to us, we all saw the comments.
Just for clarification for the townspeople, school construction is the one putting the structural steel on the second floor of the library building. And, uh, there were some dimensional changes that need to be made in that steel that have yet to be done.
Or, and mounted.
And, and...
Installed.
Installed, so, uh, we had sent a, a letter, uh, to find out their intentions to finish that project, because we hadn't heard anything from them. Uh, about thirty, a little over thirty days ago, and we finally heard back from that construction company.
And the thing is, uh, I'm gonna say, they're willing to do it based, they, however their request, a liability waiver be executed, that's, uh, executed at school, and offered response for any damage to the structure of the roof prior to installing the steel, the engineers' specifications. And the thing is, uh, with, with that statement, they're holding, they're, they're asking a liability waiver be executed, and, uh, we ran that by our attorneys, and they say, this is kind of late in the game to have this liability waiver, and, uh, they're, they're recommending no.
And, and I think that, uh, if you look at their contract, they were applying steel to this roof system of that building to make sure it met the new loading, um, snow loads that are in effect today. And that was looked at by an engineer to make a determination to do that, and that engineer should be responsible, because he was paid for.
And should, he is responsible.
So, there should be no liability waiver that's needed for them to apply that steel to the building. They should just finish their contract, as far as I'm concerned, so...
And I think this is a, this represents a change in the contract, which is, we're not gonna accept.
So I think we'll have, um, maybe have the town attorney draft them back a letter, or even we can draft one and have their attorney check it before we send it to them to, you know, ask them to just complete their original contract.
Yeah, because you can't waive a liability. Number one is, if it's, when, if something would happen and they investigate it, if it's the engineer's fault, it becomes the liability of the engineer.
Yep.
But if it wasn't done according to the engineer's specs, and it's a contractor's fault, it's a contractor that ends up bearing that.
Right, that cost should be determined at that point, not...
And, and where the contract was written, that wasn't specified, the original contract.
Right.
So it wasn't highlighted that, you know, they do everything according to the engineers, you know, because they saw that they were gonna use a lot of steel in that building, so...
I, I would rather have the, uh, lawyer, um, draft the, the, which I don't think, uh...
I don't know, we don't have to have a lawyer send a letter back.
Doesn't look like it's gonna be that long a letter, so it shouldn't have cost a lot of money to go through.
That's an action item, uh, as far as, we're gonna, a town administrator will request on the lawyer to draft a letter back to him, that, um, stop work.
And, and before it's sent off, the selectmen should review the letter, just to make sure it's...
Yep, agreed. And I think that's, that's the MO, that's how it's stated, the way they work. Okay. Let's take it.
They did say that they're willing to get started very shortly to do the project, which I was surprised to hear, so that was good.
All right, I have general town business, so I have some, uh, some business from the inbox. First of all, I, uh, early in this year, um, we had a lot of interest on high-speed internet, and so we got an update from, uh, from the Dunbaron Telephone Company, and, um, I'm not, I, I think I'll read it. This is dated today. First, in the Gorham Pond area, we have installed and spliced fiber cable on the poles to most houses. We will be contacting customers in that area soon to start scheduling installations. Secondly, second, we've also run fiber optic cable to the Twist Hill Road area. Fiber drops have been also run to most houses in the area, and new interfaces are being installed on houses to accommodate the fiber. Homes on Armon's Way are slated to be upgraded within the next month or two. We will be in contact with those customers to schedule installs. Fiber upgrades to the Twist Hill area, Ordne Road, Ordway Road, Purgatory Pond Road, and Morse Road will follow. Finally, engineering has taken place for the next phase of fiber upgrades south of Dunbaron Center. Bits will be going out soon to potential contractors for this portion of the project. Up to three hundred customers will be upgraded to fiber during this phase, which will hopefully begin this, in the fall. We will continue to share periodic updates on our website at the dunbarontelephone.com. So, um, I think it's a, a great step forward, and we're making progress. So, thank you, Dunbaron Telephone Company.
Do you mind if I have a call?
Not at all.
I think I sent it to you. Okay.
And I, I actually went on the website today, and, uh, in May, uh, they provided an update of, we had, through, it's kind of, kind of like related to Grand State, but they talked about certain roads that already have, uh, network complete. They include Bernard Hill, Burnham Lane, Calipso Way, Guile Road, Guinea Road, Grapevine Road, some, Mansion Road, Samuel's Court, Stark Highway North, Stark Lane, Stinson Drive, Attentive Hill Road, Williams Court, and Zachary Drive. And, uh, so there, we are making progress. So I'm happy to see that Dunbaron's town is doing well. That's an FYI.
Can you hear it?
Yeah, okay, great.
Will you classify that as part of the mailbox?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be, go on, go on, while I get it.
When we, it's when we pave. Okay, um, this is an FYI. Um, uh, the town clerk workstation is gonna be evaluated as for, for ergonomics. And, uh, and I think that's a great move, because it's, uh, they're working off some, just the flat tables, and maybe they can do something better to make the workstation a bit better. I think it's great that we're bringing some consultants in at no charge, because we're bodily...
Primex.
Primex, yeah, super. And why do we need that? Well, things called repetitive injury, neck injuries, all sorts of injuries that can happen to people if they don't have a quote-unquote reasonable workstation to work at.
Want to sign that?
Yeah, I will.
I've got something along that line after.
Okay.
After.
That's all this stuff. I think I'm almost, almost out of inbox. What am I missing, Liam? I missed any outside of inbox?
I think that was it.
Yeah, that's the sum of my boxes for some month. Okay, general town business, I'm gonna go to the selectmen first. I'm gonna go to David, if you have any general town business, please.
No, I don't think so.
Your boss, I was gonna yield to lean first.
Uh, no, I'm on...
You're all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, I got three things. One of them is, because again, this, I'm an early bird anyway, so I got to the voting area a little after seven, and I see people asking the time it opened up, and they drove away. And, you know, everybody's with this big kick about getting people the ability to vote. And I like to see, because I guess the selectmen can amend the hours as to when the voting booths are open. Now, on the, last year, when we had the presidential election, in the, uh, you know, the congressional and the senate election, there were ninety-three people in line at quarter after, from quarter after seven on, that didn't leave, that doesn't count the ones that left, probably never made it back. So I'm just wondering if we might entertain, and we don't have to do it tonight, but it's something to think about. Going from seven to seven, or seven to six for the hours of voting, because there's a lot of people that are going to work that come in, and I gotta tell you, maybe at the end of the day, they don't feel like driving back in, but they've got that, you know, that oof in the morning where they might vote, so it's something to think about, so that we might make a change.
We don't disenfranchise that many.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. The other, the other thing, I would like to keep it open till seven, because I do know on the way home, a lot of people head home, so... I know it's gonna be longer hours for us, unfortunately, but I think that...
And I don't have a problem, I'm just throwing out there two numbers that, you know, whatever works. It's, we did notice a lot of people came in from six-thirty to quarter to seven this last election, you know?
Right, no, I'm, yeah, I don't think we should be turning people away if they do make it in. I don't wanna open at six o'clock, obviously, but...
I think Trichester, oh, I think at six, they open at six-thirty, I think.
Yeah.
And so I think, uh, the radio station declared Dunbaron, they were going down the opening times, like, bowl was, uh, seven o'clock, and then they said, Dunbaron, eight o'clock. They must be laid back at Dunbaron.
So I don't know if we wanna move it tonight, or do you wanna think about it?
I'd say, why don't we make it an agenda item for next week to vote on it?
Okay, not next week.
Uh, next meeting.
Second one is to talk to an individual that would be interested in being involved with the cemetery. And, uh, the only thing I can think of is, if it would be possible, maybe we need to talk to the cemetery trustees to see if they could use an alternate, so that somebody's learning something about, you know, what's involved coming up, or whatever, but, uh... They have a significant interest, and they have a significant financial interest in making things better. So, I, I mean, that would be a plus.
I think that's a good recommendation, if you remember, when we checked for their permanent members, they are allowed two alternates, and with the, the thing we ran into this year with having the change of the guards, let's say, and having nobody know any background on our cemetery, um, computer, and any, and any background on any of it, I said, really, definitely need some alternates on that. I think that's the only...
The building, knowledge base.
The only committee that I can think of that doesn't have any alternates at all, which I think that definitely needs some, because we, we've seen that really hurts the town when we don't have that knowledge base in there.
Recommend that we, uh, maybe, uh, email, you know, or just contact the cemetery committee, and let them, uh, uh, see if they would be acceptable to accepting an alternate. I think it's up to that committee, then we can, uh, we can appoint it all that is needed.
And also, I'd like to know that when we talk to them, that we put it on our website, that we have the ability to fill two spots for alternates on that.
It's open up to the entire public.
Yeah, on our, on our town website, so that, you know, if somebody reads through there, they could maybe volunteer for it, because we definitely could use them.
And, well, it's not too often that you have people that come up to you and ask to volunteer.
Right.
The things, usually you're going after them, and they're saying, well, maybe next year.
Yeah, let's, let's grab it while it's hot. So it's just, uh, so an action item is just to contact the cemetery committee and see, uh, if they wanna proceed with that. And, uh, they have a strong recommendation from the selectmen, I think, consensus, that we think it would be a wise move.
Do you have, do you want to give the cemetery trustees that name so that they can say, yes, we agree? And then come back with the recommendation to appoint?
Well, I like the idea that, that we can give them the name, but the thing is, they can have two alternates and also advertise it too.
But you can mention, I guess Margaret Venator is interested, you know?
That's great that somebody's interested.
I know it's not public comment, but can the alternates be appointed or do the alternates have to be elected?
They're appointed.
They are appointed, thank you.
And my last thing, only because you brought up the ergonomics, is Northeast Recycling Recovery Association, which we belong to, because I know Primex does ergonomics and, and maybe Woody can help us here. Maybe they have done it, maybe they haven't. But they offer an evaluation of the recycling center to see what you're doing that's good. And they can give pointers if there's things that are bad and for free. I figure just having them come in and give an overall perspective, especially while Woody's available, you know, because he can give them an idea of what things they do or how they do things would make it, you know, doesn't cost anything. If they can find ways that we can do things better, that's fine. And maybe we're doing things.
Since Woody's here, would you like to, to take that for action?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Okay, let us know, because we, if they come in, maybe we can send the selectmen's rep down there too.
I can do that.
Okay, I think that'd be a great idea.
And Woody, you're back to ten-hour days, looks like some paperwork.
Okay, great. But you, we'll talk later about that, appropriate time. Okay, that's great then. Thank you, Woody.
So that's all I have.
Okay, no, we got some action items here. Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment again. This time I'll go for the fire chief. Anything from public comment, sir?
For someone that's worked for a municipality for thirty years, I think you're pretty generous on your how you handle your pay and your vacation and sick leave and, I know we did have some of those benefits. And I worked under a union contract for thirty years, so I think the town of Dunbaron is pretty generous when it comes to the benefits.
I thought you were going to say we're too degraph.
No, no, I think we're
The thing is, we, we tried to be, we tried to be fair. And believe it or not, and some of the members here did some, got work, research, as far as see what other municipalities paid and came to the conclusion that we are pretty fair.
We, for a town our size, as far as one of the payments that we make out, we're right at the top. So that's why we've kind of modified that. And we didn't get near the bottom because it would be a dramatic change, I think, you know, for everybody to experience that. But at the same time, you know, we've got a responsibility both to the employee and to the residents of town. So you kind of look at what you have and what you can live with and what everybody in the town can live with, I guess.
John, and going with that, I looked at it pretty hard too. I, I worked for private companies most of my life and there's a lot of things in there that I've never seen before in my life, like longevity, nobody ever, you know, I've never been offered that in my entire life, so, yeah, I do think in, in reading through this that, you know, there are portions of the, of the town pay that are a little more stringent. And then there are other benefits that, you know, working for this town, I think for the size of the town are pretty, pretty good, so I think that
They didn't put longevity in your pay because they
They think I've got a last line.
Don't want you to.
Okay.
I received word a couple hours ago that our cruiser that we ordered, the upvins complete. So we'll pick that up next week, you know, put that online, and we will transfer the other vehicle to the fire department.
That was my second question. When does Chief get his new vehicle?
As soon as we get it cleaned out and, yeah.
Okay.
Chief, are we gonna, are we gonna use that in its present color? Are we changing that to red or?
Well, I'm going to look at that. Obviously, this vehicle should last us for many years, so I'd like to get it painted, but I don't have any clue what that would cost.
I did see a nice red one down in your parking lot last week, so that's what made me think, I looked twice, I thought it was ours.
No, no, but, you know, we'll look at that. It might have to be a budget item next year, but, you know, we can change the decals and actually, the town and Bull, they have the same vehicle, Tower, and the previous chief headed black, and the new chief didn't want a black. And they just set it on headed vinyl down to the Bruggies and you have to touch this vehicle and know it hasn't been painted. Came out really nice. Red and white stripes and the town logo and all nine yards. And it was fairly reasonable, you know, less than two thousand dollars or whatever. So that, you know, that's something we can look at, but, you know, in the long run, down the road, because I anticipate serving five months for many years.
Right.
To at least get it painted. But in the meantime, like I said, decals off it. And Chief's leaving a radio in, which is a big, big plus. You know, getting that installed, that's going to save us quite a bit of money.
I didn't tell him the radio's not functioning. He was in with the radio.
We didn't get it paid, that's in there, that's a
But that wasn't the vehicle that got soiled? No. No.
But, yeah, so we'll work out.
Okay, thanks for the update. What do you know?
I'm here with Donna.
Okay, right, right.
We're going to bring it back.
Yep, Donna.
Actually, I did have one thing. I was down in the library basement today to put the bunting for the bandstand away in their plastic container. The storage locker, if you will, the screened-in one, the floor in there is unbelievably, it, it's wet. That's how moist it is down there. And the town has all those boxes and cardboard boxes of papers and old town reports and stuff down there. I would highly recommend a dehumidifier down there. And if you do put it in, you're going to, you'll be, you'll be emptying it every four or five hours, so you'd want to put a line into a drain.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's bad. Real bad.
Want to, want to put that on our agenda next week? We'll take a look at it and maybe
Two weeks.
Two weeks on it, yeah. Just so we have it on our agenda, we don't let it fall through.
You could save yourself, maybe save yourself a little bit of grief if the, the area you're most concerned with is obviously the one that has the paper storage in it. If you plastic, put plastic on those screened walls, the dehumidifier wouldn't be trying to dehumify the whole basement. It would just be trying to dehumidify.
I don't think it would hurt to do the whole basement, though, that's my problem.
Well, you're going to need a big one. It's, you'd have to take a look at it. It's dark, it's wet.
That's what makes buildings raw, is a wet basement, so I think we should look at it, you know?
Okay, thank you. So the reason we'll, I think it's worth looking at. Yeah, I run a, run a my basement, it definitely helps.
Yeah, mine too.
Okay. All right, there was something that came in the inbox. I want to talk about signs, it was using, utilizing nonprofit signs at the transfer station.
Oh, Jesus, sorry, somebody, yeah, they were supposed to be there.
Right, and so let's table that to next week.
I'm not sure if that
There was a use of nonprofit signs at their
Oh, did you get anything formally in writing?
No.
I know, kind of, okay.
I know there was something pending.
The discussion was if they could put a sign up to get some of the items that people are dropping off. Maybe they want to drop them off at the curio center. Which wouldn't be bad in the sense that at least the people at the transfer station wouldn't have to handle it after they're left behind.
Right.
At the same time, the person should be here to make the presentation they need to make, you know?
There's also like separation of church and state, and there's all sorts of issues with that. And so I wanted to see what kind of status they were, not how nonprofit they were and stuff like that. I mean, Boy Scouts go down there, you get the fire department, sell tickets down there, you got a bunch of nonprofits down there doing stuff. Try not to get in the way of the gym and try to do his work. And I just got to make sure what we do, we don't invite the whole view, that's your word. But we gotta, we gotta, we just can't have, it's not a, it's, it's a transfer station. It's not a, it is a public meeting, but it's almost too, but we, principal job is transfer, so I think we just need to look at that.
But it's not a transfer of finances between the town and an entity of the church.
Exactly.
So, it's a matter of, but still the person has to make their presentation so we know exactly what they're talking about, what they're looking for.
Totally agree. Okay, Chief, and there's one thing I wanted to ask you since you're here, since we're not going to do it in a, in a very near future, but before the end of the year, we want to look at any of these ordinances which affect, you find problematic for you. And which not, we're not going to go through the correct approval procedure. And we like to address those and maybe create them as warrants if required at the next town meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so I, I'm going to charge you with, as an action item, just identify the ones that you find problematic and if you had a little more force, enforce it. And we'll do our part.
Yes, Sergeant Brown Light has identified a few of those and you've been on our list of things to do, so I think you just moved it up to the front.
Okay.
And, and you both chiefs here are aware, you know, you're getting some lighting around the outside of that building. So that hopefully we have the emergency lighting in place if we have any emergencies. We were notified that the
Garages.
Highway garages.
Pretty much named for completion.
Yeah.
So we're making progress. And I'll talk to you later. I still need to
Oh, yes, yeah. I better write that on my own agenda. Send me an email.
Okay. We still have some small projects that are in critical need. One of the projects we want to finish is on the library. The door, the rear door needs repaired. We want to get it repaired before winter. And so that's one of our actions we want to, and it has to be, it can't be done, it's not, the problem is, it's not, it's not a stock door. It's going to take a custom job by a carpenter who's familiar with hanging doors. So you're on the hook.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can we go to the section on public then?
I would think that's all we have left on the agenda.
Anything, I think we went by everybody. All right, Lee, I didn't go to the town administrator, anything else for the
No, I'm good right now.
And Corinne, Yekido, are we doing okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I want to say about the non-public is we would, we'll be probably letting the chair of that board in, but probably not general public.
That's correct.
So, just wanted to state that for the record.
All right, let's, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, then we go and, you know, public.
We got to get everything done.
C. Two, C.
Two, C.
Right here.
C. Make them, okay.
Do I turn this off?
Yeah, oh yeah.